All right. I'll let everyone in and share my screen. Okay, whenever you are ready, John.
Okay. The time is now 5:36 PM. I am calling to order the South End Landmark District Commission, October 7th, 2025, public hearing. Commissioners present are Commissioner Chris DeBoer, Commissioner John Freeman, Commissioner Felicia Jacques, and myself, John Amadeo. Today, the commission will be holding a public hearing to review applications in accordance with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, extending the suspension of these provisions until June 30th, 2027. We are conducting this meeting online. To ensure public access to the deliberations of the South End Landmark District Commission, the public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. This hearing is being recorded. All further conversations between commissioners should be audible to the public in attendance until the hearing has adjourned. Are there any media or elected officials currently present? If so, please raise your hand using the Zoom meeting platform and state your name, title, and affiliation. Jackie, do we see anybody raising their hand?
I do not see anyone.
Okay, then I'll carry on. Members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. We will repeat these instructions throughout the hearing. Next, I'll read from the agenda. Tonight's agenda includes violations, design review, administrative review, the ratification of the September 2nd meeting minutes, staff updates, and then adjournment. And we'll begin with violations. And we only have one on the agenda tonight, and that is 7 Wellington Street. The work is the restoration of the exterior front stairway to the parlor level, the installation of new front doors, the replacement of nonoriginal windows with new windows, and a new roof deck. And Rachel, is there anything you want to say before the applicant begins to present?
Sure, this is a violation that was filed over the summer. Work started to take place without approvals. And I believe a stop work order was issued. The work that was taking place was restoration of a front exterior stoop and removal of existing windows. And then Mark Lacass, I'm having a hard time making you a co-host. So if you could just raise your hand in the Zoom function, and I might have to just unmute you the old fashioned way. Mark? Are you with us?
And I'm trying, yep, there, I think there's the mute. Can you hear me now?
Yes, I don't know why it's not letting me make you a co-host, Mark. I'm very sorry. Are you okay with your video being off?
Yes, but will I be able to share a screen?
We have the presentation that you've sent us.
Yep, yep.
But if you want to share a screen, I think I can update the settings to do so.
No, that's good, because that's what I have loaded up. Start. All right, so let me just look at one more thing. Yeah, it won't let me turn my video on, so sorry about that. But good evening, Commissioners. Mark Lacass for the property owner and proponent here. With me is Glenn Hoffman, our architect, and John Hanson, who is the project manager on behalf of the owner applicant. So as Rachel indicated, there was a violation issued back in April. The wooden stairway that some of you may have seen is not the reconstruction of the to-be-restored historic stairway, but rather a temporary means of getting construction materials into the building at the parlor level. It's, it's coming down, it's not, that's, yeah, it was simply a construction motivated temporary insulation. And I think we probably want to start there. I will tell you that we also had to go to the zoning board of appeal to get the necessary zoning relief. That has all occurred. We were approved by the ZBA, and that decision has become final, after which we then submitted our design review application before you tonight, essentially as a remedy to the violation. And that is to rebuild and restore the front stairway, restore the front doors, install new windows, and install a roof deck. Since much of that revolves entirely around the architecture and the materials, I will turn it over to Glenn Hoffman to walk you through the elevations and talk about the proposed materials and the design of the new stairway and the front doors, which you can see on the screen there before you. So Glenn.
Can I get a quick question? I'm sorry.
Of course.
I'm not sure I understand what the violation is.
John, the violation was that a wooden staircase was built where the proposed front door is to get construction materials up and.
Can't you, so was there an application for this work?
Not, not yet.
So there was no application, was the trick? I, I hear somebody's.
Yeah. So, John, there, there was no application yet because we hadn't gone through the zoning process yet. And a temporary wooden stairway was constructed to get construction materials through that.
I saw a picture of it, okay.
It has nothing to do with the actual stairway that.
Understood.
Built, so that was, that was the basis of the violation in part.
And windows were also removed.
In, in part, as I was saying, and windows were removed, yes.
Got it, well, that definitely, okay, that would be, okay, I understand now, thank you.
Okay, sure thing. So with that, I'll turn it over to Glenn Hoffman to talk about the proposed restoration of the front door stoop, which is consistent with the front steps at number three and number five Wellington on either side. So clearly, this was part of a series of row houses that were built at the same time with similar entryways. And the original was lost, perhaps sometimes in the seventies. So Glenn.
Good evening, Board members. For the record, my name is Glenn Hoffman. I'm with GPH Design, Architecture and Planning. We are out of Milton, Massachusetts. And as, as discussed, our real goal here is to truly restore the front entrance of this building and the front stoop, as we're calling it. That includes materially that the stairs will be concrete with, you know, brick sides. And there'll be an opening under the stair that'll lead to the first floor unit, which is very similar to the adjacent adjacent units, adjacent row, row homes. We're also mimicking the concrete pillars that you see in the adjacent units. We're really not trying to, we're not trying to reinvent the wheel here at all. We're really just trying to create a nice entrance and stair and door that is contextual with the rest of the neighborhood. We actually, we do have shop drawings for the new, the new wood doors that are an exact replica of the doors that are adjacent to this property now. Yeah, that's, that's a good picture right there. There you see the wood stair that was obviously a temporary stair and picture to the, to your right, you see the entry stair parlor door inspiration that would, that's what we use it for a design inspiration for for this front stair for this unit. Any, any questions from the board? I don't want to talk too long. There's really isn't a lot to talk about. We, we really just want to re- replicate the stairs that are on both either side of this unit and, and do the same with the doors.
Also note that the applicants are requesting a roof deck. They did a mock-up, but it's still visible from a public way. So staff would ask that the commission remand that portion of the violation to us so we can meet with them on site to push it back a little bit so we no longer see it from the public way.
Thank you, Rachel. I forgot to mention that. We discussed that earlier.
Okay, Glenn, do, do you have, we'll get to questions, Chris, in a second. Glenn, are you finished with your presentation?
I am.
Okay. So we'll start with Commissioner questions, and then after that, we'll follow with Commissioner comments and then take a vote. Well, actually, we'll take a motion and then take public comment, and after public comment, we'll take a vote. So we'll start with you, Chris. Questions?
Right, yeah, I did. And the, first of all, kudos to you. I love to see this going back up. I appreciate you building back the fabric that was in the stuff, and I noticed the stairs. I knew what was going on. Good for you. I appreciate that. I, I see in the, I, I mean, I didn't see in the new drawings any, I don't think I did. If you can show me the new facade that you were putting up there. I didn't see any stoop roof or high lasters on the side. Are you mimic that as well?
At this time, no, but we, we could. We could look into that if that was desired.
I, I mean.
I think some, I think some of our houses in the neighborhood have them. I think some of them don't.
I mean, if you're using the one right next door as an example with the stairs, and again, I, I think it's wonderful. Thank you. Then it also, it does have the, the high lasters and the stoop roof with the over that. I'm, I'm pretty sure if that's the one next door, and that would, that would be a great thing. I, I restore these. I know how they're built up there, but it would really, that was just my question. If you were doing to it, I didn't see it there. I'd love to see that done, but I, I'll leave it at that.
So. Okay. Any other questions, John?
Yes, well, first, I want to echo what Chris said. I, I think this is a great project. We're really happy and I'm sure I'm speaking to the whole commission to see this going forward. I'm sorry it had to start with a violation, but I think you'll find us really supportive of the project overall. My, my question was just about the windows. Can you tell us about, a little bit about the windows that you took out? I, I saw it said "nonhistoric," but.
Mark, do you want to address the windows?
Glenn, maybe you could tell us what the material is, just as a start?
And, and why, what era they are?
Okay, now I've been unmuted again. For some reason, I'm just really hamstrung here, sorry.
We can hear you, Mark.
Okay. John Hanson, who's the project manager, is also on and has a little more information about the windows, but I think there's another picture, Rachel, as well, that shows the pile of windows, which, you know, clearly they're not original windows, like, yeah.
It's, this is so small on my screen, it's hard to tell. Can you zoom in on it? Back here, okay.
They're tilted even.
Yeah.
They're what?
Tilted.
Oh, they're tilted.
Oh, so definitely not originals.
Okay.
Yeah, and do you know the material?
What are they made of? It looks like vinyl.
Yeah.
They're vinyl?
I believe so. John, are you able to unmute? John Hanson?
I have requested front unmute, so you should be able to.
Yeah, yeah, there, yeah, they are vinyl, yes.
Okay, were the jams, so we're seeing sashes here. Were the jams original, or were those also, was it, so it was a full replacement vinyl window that you took out?
For my recollection, yes, that was, the majority of those were full replacement.
Do you have a picture of a jam or anything?
I do not have any accessible to me. I could reach out after the fact to the contractor, but I do not have any.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were the contractor. You're that.
I'm just the owner's rep.
You're the owner, project manager, okay.
That's correct, yeah.
All right. And so have you, or I guess there's a question for staff. You know, there's a lot of detail that goes into these stoops. Have you sat down and had a meeting with staff and just gone through the details? Because I don't think we have the time to do that here. Above the stoop.
Yeah, we, we have not had any direct meetings. I mean, I think at this point, we were looking, as Glenn mentioned, at the adjacent row houses that were built at the same time as kind of the inspirations. Our intent would be to work with our, our contractor to truly come up with a set of shop drawings that did mimic those and match those detailing and the insets. So we certainly would be amenable to providing those to staff before that goes into fabrication.
Okay, sounds good. Those are all my questions.
Okay. Thanks, John. Felicia, do you have any questions?
No, just to echo Chris's comment about the pilasters, that if they could be included, I think that that would really, really hearken to, 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 to the example next door.
And I want to echo Chris and John's. Thanks to you for the restoration and bringing this entranceway back to its original configuration. We so rarely see that happen. So it's really wonderful, as John said, you know, it's, we're not thrilled that it's coming before us as a violation, but you'll, you'll find that we will be supportive of what you're doing. And I don't have any, well, I, I do have a question. Regarding the, the concrete masonry for the steps, you know, typically, the, the original steps were stone. They were typically brownstone in a building like this. I, I don't expect that you'll be doing brownstone, but do you have a plan for the color of the concrete?
It would, it would be, we'd either replicate the brownstone if it's not like an actual cell, or if it was out of concrete, we would try to replicate the brownstone color, the adjacent units.
Mm-hmm, okay. And then I, what is your model for the doors that you're putting in? Especially the ones at the top of the stairs.
Yeah, Rachel, we did send in shop drawing of that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we worked with.
One, one at a time, please.
Sorry. Who's speaking? So, yeah, so we, I, I've at least reached out to, to one vendor, and they were able to provide this shop drawing based on the existing door. So the intent would be to basically go out, just do a final field verification again of those adjacent doors. And this would be a custom fabrication, either by true style, as this shop drawing is showing, or, or similar.
Right. My question, and that's helpful, and thanks, thank you for that, but my question really was, what were you modeling the design of these doors after? Because there were no original doors in the building when you started, right?
That's correct. Yeah, it would be number three and five Wellington, so that the, the, pick the sheet of photos that shows the adjacent entry door. Those do match, then five matches three. So we were kind of looking at those as a, as a whole of three row houses.
Okay, that, that's great. That's exactly the answer I was looking for. Thank you. So I think we can go to comments now. I think Chris and Felicia, you may have mixed your comments in with your questions, but I'll ask you if you have any further comments. Chris?
Yes, I just, I comment questions sometimes the same, but I was wondering, you have the brick veneer at the sides of the stairs. My suggestion is not a requirement, is do full bricks in case they ever crack split, you know, hinges go in for grates or something like that. It's a, I think it's a stronger look.
That was the intent. That's the design intended. We have, I think we have, we're showing an eight inch wall there, so it would be a full width of brick.
It'd be the full depth?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, not, not, not a veneer?
No.
Good, thank you. That's, that would say, that just makes it look stronger and better. You're really hitting, hitting it out of the park. Thank you.
I agree with you. At that level, I think a, a veneer type brick would tend to freeze and fall off, so.
Yeah.
I would not advise that.
Okay. And any more comments, Chris?
I'm, I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Felicia, any comments?
No further comments, thank you.
Okay, John?
Yes. I, I agree with everything that Chris has said so far, I think, and Felicia, I think it would be very nice to have the surround of the doors. I think technically, we're not, we can't require it. If you want to call it phased and do it as a second phase for some reason, I think that would be okay, but it would be fantastic if you could do it now. I, I think that this is complicated enough. So I have two little quibbles, and it's really just about language. You, in your drawings, you use the word similar a lot, and to me, similar does not mean exact match. So I think it would be useful to clarify exactly what it is. It's same contour, same profile, same material. And I, and, excuse me. And again, similar to using the word veneer, I, we wouldn't allow veneer brick, but we would certainly support full brick. You've said that that's what you want to do. So I think what I would like to encourage is that you sit down with our staff and go through the drawings and the details and the shop drawings in detail and make sure that they're comfortable with it. They may have some questions for the commission to follow up on. But that would, rather than spend an hour here going through every little detail and how things would be made and supported. So that's what I would recommend, and I would recommend, recommend that it, hang on a second. Forgot to shut off my phone, sorry. That, that, that's staff help you define what it is that they need to know. Also, the door under the stair, I saw that it said a grate, but I didn't see is there a door, if there's a door behind it, that would also fall under our purger. So that's my recommendation, is that we remand the full review of this to staff. I think we can lift the violation with, if the other commissioners agree with that simple proviso.
Okay, good recommendations, John. I, I agree with John's recommendations. And could you go to the side of the stair elevation? Yeah, thank you. I would like to, my comments are regarding the concrete for the pillar and for the stair treads. I recommend that you follow the staff recommendations for the historic colors that would match brownstone. There are maybe two pink colors that you can get that are readily available that would match the brownstone of the original stairs that may have been there. And I also would like to suggest that the color be integral and not painted on the surface because surface, the surface materials can, can chip, and then if they're only painted, you'll reveal white concrete beneath them. So I recommend that it be integral color. And so that would go for the stairs, the coping on the cheek walls and the pillars at the bottom of the stairs. I also have a comment regarding the handrail going up the stairs. That's a good, you know, schematic of the handrail, but the details are important. I think the top rail would need to be a molded rail. And you can find those kinds of molded rails two and a half inch wide in the Lawler catalog, and I think at the bottom, you should terminate the rail in either a volute or a lamb's tongue so that it has a proper finish, and you're, you're not just ending the rail with the end of a cut, cut rail. So, because that, it's those details that matter in the district. So I guess that, that, so my, my comment for integral color would go for all concrete that's being used. I see at the base of the cheek wall, there's also a concrete wall base. So anywhere that you have concrete, if it's lintels as well and such, that, and sills, that you also make those integral concrete. I presume that the metal work is being painted, oh, it does say black on the, on the drawing, so I don't have to presume. That's great. So I think not repeating the comments of other commissioners, those would be all of my comments other than that I would agree with staff that we remand the roof deck review to to a subcommittee. And the window replacement, I would also say that staff would review and approve the details of those.
And I would say I would offer my time also, if, if staff wants any help or ideas on the staircase and the pilasters and the, and the roof or anything like that, I'm happy to give comment.
That's great, Chris. I'm sure they would welcome your expertise. So, and I agree that it would be nice to see the pilasters and the hood over the door that would really bring it in line with the other townhouses, row houses on the street and typical of the district. It's actually, while there are some buildings that don't have hoods, these, this model would likely have had one, so it would be nice to see that added, but we can't require it. As John said. So I think we're ready for a motion. If someone would like to make a motion, I'm, I think we're ready.
I'll try. I'm sure I won't get all of those things.
We can help as you go along.
I'll make a motion to to lift the violation on the condition that the applicants meet with staff and do a detailed review of the process, including, by detailed, I mean, in discussion, but also showing details of how this will all be put together so that it clarifies the differences between exactly matching or, or matching in material or matching in whatever contour. And that the comments made by the other commissioners about the type of material, the integral concrete, the type of steel and so on be included in that as the proviso. I'm sure that it looks like the applicant was already intending to do those things, but that just makes it clearer and I think, you know, makes the discussion a lot better. I think I will accept amendments to that proposal.
And what about windows and the roof deck, John?
Oh, yes, and we will, can remand those to staff as, I accept the amendment.
Do you feel we need a subcommittee for the roof deck?
I think staff can review it. In my opinion, staff can review it. And they, and if, if they need to, they can set up, ask, or create a subcommittee. If you say it'd be better to create one on standby, we can do that tonight.
That feels confident. It doesn't need to push back too far. Staff feels pretty confident that they can manage it on their own, but we can always bring it back if there are issues.
Yeah. Yeah, this seems like a standard roof deck setback would be, you know, this would be an easy one. So I, I think that's a motion, John. So we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
I second that.
Okay, that's Chris. So we have a motion, and it's been seconded, so we can ask for public comment now.
So we actually don't do public comment with violations, John.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Rachel. So then we'll just go to a vote. Felicia?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. Thank you very much to you, Mark, and company. John?
Yes, we, we really appreciate it. This is a good project, and
Yeah.
I'm sorry I started off on the wrong foot, but that's great.
Yeah. Yeah, we wish you luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank all your comments.
And Glenn. Okay. Take good care. We'll go to the next, or we'll start design review and go to the first application.
Awesome. And then, John, I just wanted to let you know that Kevin Reddy joined.
Oh, great.
Our five of you, so all five of you can vote.
Okay.
I've, I've also been here the whole time. I was just off camera, so I apologize.
Okay. Didn't mean to exclude you, Kevin. We didn't see you.
No, no problem at all, no.
So there we go. Well, welcome, Kevin, and thank you, Rachel, for clarifying voting. So we'll go to the next application. It's 22 Union Park. The proposed work is to install a new PVC air intake pipe for a boiler at the front garden. This is continued from the September 2nd hearing. And is the applicant? And is the applicant here?
Good evening. Can you all hear me?
We can. Can you, you give us your full name, please?
Uh, my name is Juan Mullier, representing 22 Union Park. Trying to get my camera on. I don't know if I'm, it's on your end or my end. Soon's been not playing well with me lately.
Okay, we don't need your video, just your voice. It's okay.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Like I said, my name is Juan Mullier. This is a continuation for the application for a inter-air intake pipe for our new boiler, going from oil to natural gas. And if we can go to the next. Yep. Go to the next one, please. So this is the original mock-up proposal. We can see it's in the front of the yard, hidden by the bushes. It's gonna be thirty-six inch of the ground next to the drain pipe. So last time, one of the major sticking point was on the third picture that we can see on the right, that horizontal side, side of the pipe that the committee wanted it to be not visible. So our new proposal addresses this and other sticking points. If we can go to the next slide, please. So yeah, this is, these were the ask that the horizontal portion of the intake pipe was not visible. To make the, the pipe blend in with the drain pipe. Drawings of our building, you know, to get some dimensions on distances of the house and a drawing of what the final product would look like, like a cat drawing. If we can go to the next slide, please. Here we have a letter by our contractor, Boston Standard, that will be performing the work. Brian Summers, correct me if I pronounce that correctly, Brian, is on the call. If you have any questions for him, he's the project manager for this project. So they have done their due diligence and basically going through the back of the building, how it has been proposed is the distance is too long. There is on the wall that it will go a chimney, so there is no physical room. The only way would be to have a floating pipe in the middle of our living space, which is not is not feasible. Yeah, so if you have any more questions, he is on the call. And if we can go through the next slide. So here we have blueprints of the building. The red circle is where the boiler is located. And we got some distances. So from the boiler to the front, where we are proposing this intake pipe to go through, it's roughly ten feet in distance, which it's in standards with what the boiler asks for, you know, too long of the distance, then the efficiency of the boiler and the burn shoots down dramatically. On, on the rear, we're talking about roughly thirty-three feet plus much more material and foundation and the brick wall having to be worked on. So that will be even more work and defacing the facade of the actual building. Our proposal will keep the facade of the building intact, nothing, no holes on the walls. It's just a pipe coming through the dirt, the ground. If we can go to the next slide. Please. Thank you. So here we have some other pipes in the neighborhood. So what we're proposing is to create the standard for the future of this type of work, a pipe that blends in, it's not as visible. And it's not an eyesore like we see. And this is here, just a Union Park. There are many more of these pipes, intake pipes. We see on the far right, a fire department connection pipe. So what we're proposing is to create the, the standard to go forward for other people that are proposing this type of work. And if we can go to the next slide, please. So here's a mock-up for the new design. Again, first is from the road, such sidewalk. Then on the middle, it's the mock-up. And then on the right, we can see that here we have eliminated that horizontal visible position. So our proposal is that the pipe will come through the ground, do a quick ninety-degree bend, go through this stone and that is on the ground. So the horizontal portion is under the ground. And then comes up thirty-six inches and this pipe will be blended with the cast iron and of the drain pipe. And where the, this elbow is, we are proposing to add more of the pebble you see there, so it actually covers it. And you don't see an actual elbow of the pipe. If we can go to the next slide, here, we're gonna have some cat drawings of what this roughly would look like. So we see on the first picture that the pipe is coming straight from the ground. There is no hanging horizontal portion. On the, on the second one, we see how it would come out of the ground, straight into the brick that will be covered with pebbles and rocks. We can see on the next slide more detail on what it would look like. The underground portion of this pipe. And that will be again, behind some shrubbery. And the pipe will be blended to the cast iron portion of the drain pipe. I know that it was mentioned, perhaps you've seen some copper, but if we go to the next slide. These are rough dimensions of what the, the distances of the pipe is gonna be. Next slide, please. So here we see that the portion, the thirty-six inches above the ground is cast iron. Using copper would clash, so it would defeat the purpose of blending in this intake pipe. But there is a painting technique that I found that will bind it to the cast iron pack and it would, it would look like a, a pipe coming out of this pipe. On the next slide, the, this paint proposal is explained, this technique calls for chalkboard paint and sand mixture. This gives color and texture to blend into this cast iron that's been there weather for a while, several decades. This mixture is painted in that to create the cast iron look, using rostone metallic rust. It creates a patina to match and blend in to this weather look and the finish will be sealed. So the, the weather, the elements will not impact this intake pipe and it will last for a long time and looks natural next to the cast iron pipe. The next slide just shows the procedure for this. And we can see on the far right, that is a wooden table that they made to look like cast iron using this technique, which is what I am proposing and wanting to do with this pipe. And that way it blends as opposed to having some, so other contrasting metal, shiny copper or green copper that it would clash. So this is our proposal. It addresses the, the horizontal portion of the of the original proposal. It blends it in, so it looks more natural. And yes, any questions? Brian is on the call as well. If you have any questions for him, the, his company is the one doing this work for our building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Juan, for that very thorough presentation. So I, I'm gonna ask commissioners for their questions first. So John, do you have any questions?
I just wanna, first I wanna, first, thank you for doing all of that careful work and careful thought. It is very interesting proposal. I want to make sure I'm understanding it completely, though. Can you go back to your CAD drawings? That's fine. So the ground is, and the drawing on the left, the garden is the material that you're showing to the left. And then you have brick. And then on the, to the right of the brick would be the interior.
It will be the interior of the window well. It's still ground.
Oh, so that's the window well. So your brick is, your brick pattern is ninety degrees, right?
Back one more side, you can see the stone on the far right. It's cobblestone.
Oh, so that's cobblestone.
Yeah, sorry, the pattern, that was, that's what solid work had as a pattern.
That, so that was what was confusing me. So your pipe, so this is an intake vent. And it's coming, it's coming from the building through the ground up into the window well. Then it's going back under the ground. Why not just intake from the window well?
That would be more visible in front of the window.
Yeah, yeah, you wouldn't want to do that.
Because, because it's also because of the
And if, if we go from where the boiler is, which is our utility room, and if we just go straight where right now the proposed pipe is, it, that will be hitting the foundation. So the window well is the opening that we have from our from our room, the boiler room.
Okay, and is
Excuse me.
Okay, and where is the vent? Where's the, where's the exhaust vent?
The exhaust right now is using the building's chimney, the original proposal and idea was to use a chimney for both, but in the past, one of the liners was cemented. When, we don't know when this happened, so there was only room from one pipe, if you will. And the exhaust pipe going up the chimney was the most important one to have. That way any fumes are above any living space.
And this is a new boiler that you're putting in?
Correct. We switched from an oil boiler. We removed the oil tank, which, you know, it very hazardous if there's a spill and came with a brand new natural gas efficiency, so.
Okay. Okay, I think those are my questions.
Okay, great, thank you. Chris, do you have any questions?
Uh, just, we, we had talked about coming out to the side of that window well. Did that prove to be too difficult? To come through the, through the foundation to the
Directly into the garden, right?
Yeah.
Instead of going into the window well and then into the garden.
Yeah.
Yeah, we would have to dig, I don't know how many feet or, you know, a foundation. And I poke my head around and it looks like it's granite. So this is the easiest way, cause that is direct access. There is just a small layer of dirt in the window well. And, and the way we have it, you know, in this proposal, it would be covered with more pebbles and go, and then underground again.
Yeah. What, what is the foundation wall below the window? And why would that be different than the foundation wall below the wall next to it?
So on the window, there is, it seemed, there's like a, I think it's a fiberglass panel at this point. I believe in the passes was used for either the coal intake or for something. It, it is open. So from the it's, it's, yeah, that's the best way I can describe it. If you go and you see there is the shape of this window world, which is a U shape all the way down to the utility room. So there. Yeah, it's open. That's why this is the easiest way. We, you, we wouldn't have to dig through any foundation and create a
What's the wall made of below the window?
Below this window well?
No, below the window. What is the wall made of? The wall has to, there has to be a wall there, right?
Oh, no, yes, there is. Yes, correct.
What's that made of?
I'm guessing it's granite from what I've looked at it. Yes.
So then the question is, if it's granite and you're coming through the granite and then you have to go through the window well wall, why don't you just go through the granite next to the window well and straight up into the garden?
There is, in the window well, there is no granite. It's open. There is a panel there.
Well, that's exactly what I was asking. What is below the window?
Not below the window, but under the window well.
Below the window well, okay.
Yes.
What forms that circular wall? Is it brick? Is it granite? Is it cement? Is it something to keep the dirt out and the water?
Guessing it, uh, looks like granite, but I'm not a hundred percent sure. But it's, it looks thick.
Okay.
And then, and then it's very close to the other building's structure wall as well. So our proposal minimizes any structure nightmare that might come to pass in the future.
Okay, so Chris, did you have any further questions?
Well, I was, I guess kind of questions and, and comments, cause we talked about this at length last week and questions, you say? I, I mean, I don't see why a three-inch core through the granite would cause structural issues down the road, you know, if that's all it was. It's a fairly straightforward effort to, you know, core for, for that and then just keep everything minimal off to the side. And I guess I'll save everything for comments.
Okay. Felicia, do you have any questions? Felicia, you might be muted.
Appreciate them trying to address the numerous comments that we had at the last meeting. And at least be able to come up with portions of a solution for this, but no, no questions.
Okay. I think my questions were asked were asked as part of Chris's question, so I think we can go to comments. I'm sorry, Kevin, I skipped you. Kevin, go ahead.
That's okay. So Juan, just two quick questions, I think. One is, I'm wondering if you're aware of the commission approving any similar or any front-facing systems. And two, you've talked about the, this, you know, proposal being the future. I wanna just get you to explain or expand upon that a little bit if you can.
I have no access to your folks' records, so I don't know of any other proposal, but I see these pipes in plentiful forms around all of South End. And last time when we talked, you know, you guys prefer something that looks elegant, so my when I say this becomes a new standard is you know, I believe that the pipes that I mentioned in Union Park, I don't know if it was Rachel or Jacqueline that said that they didn't have any records of proposals for it. So in this way, this can become the standard around to use because honestly, this once the, the months get colder, can become a safety issue for our building. When the whole building is gonna be shut because of the cold air, this can create negative pressure, which can push carbon monoxide into our living area. So we want this to be, you know, done as soon as possible. And saying the new standard is, you know, doing it to the committee's liking and standards. And we would, you know, appreciate that technologies do change with time. It was coal back in the day, now it's natural gas and some systems need this type of in, intake pipes and tools. And I know that the standard says no mechanical equipment in the front yard, but as Christopher mentioned in our previous proposal meeting, the drain pipes are considered mechanical systems. And so we just want to do the right thing by everyone, our building and by the committee. So that's why we're here, as opposed to just doing it by ourselves and not telling anyone. We wanna do it right. And that's why we're here doing this work. Another comment is, I just poked my head into the utility room and it's a solid two foot of granite. Um, if we wanna go straight through the ground like um, you might propose. That's why we have this um, bent going through the window well, because the other one is straight, two feet of granite. Um, I just checked, um, and cutting. Horizontal and then vertical on that, uh. I know that's, that would be a monumental task, um, that's why this is the easiest and it's also elegant. Um. Yes.
Oops, sorry, I was muted, um, and I didn't realize it, um, so we're gonna go to commissioner comments now. Um, so, um, Chris, comment.
I appreciate very much your diligence on this, I know we talked about this at great length but last week and we, I had said, you know, when you first said you were gonna paint. You know PVC, my alarms went off, cause PVC painted, I don't. I'm not a fan of that, but then you showed your uh, antique cast iron, that's pretty impressive. Um, and uh, I can vouch also that you walk up. That side of the street of, of uh, Union Park and you will see all sorts of. Mechanical things out in the yard, whether it's for irrigation, whether it's uh, the pipes that you showed in your pictures. So I agree with you, I like that you're trying to find a standard we could go forward with, because a lot of those other ones didn't come. Before the commission and they could have been much improved upon and you're working towards this, um, and I thank you for that. Uh, so perhaps the painting of the PVC, I, I, I still have to be convinced of that. And you know, old shiny copper turns green over time and that's what happens when you, you know, build, so that's something that ages is, is. Very important if you're gonna put it in front of a house, I believe. As, as far as the, the, the two foot of granite. Um, you get a professional to do that and they'll do it just like a knife through butter. And uh, I, I don't see that as a problem, e- especially if you come directly off your boiler, go through the granite. Come up i- in a ninety degree and, you know, near that cast iron drain pipe, I think you've got a winner there. Again, thank you for your uh, diligence and thank you for listening to our thoughts and, and uh, having patience with. Going through all of this, I'm sure it's um. Uh, somewhat difficult to see your neighbors or somebody else in the south end do something and, and get away with it, if you will. And, but you're coming before us and we really appreciate that and if this becomes a standard, that's even better.
Okay, um, thanks, Chris. Um, Kevin, do you have any comments?
No, thanks.
Okay, um, Felicia, comments?
Uh, just, just a comment with respect, I think Juan, you said that um, you're planning to build up with additional pebbles to cover. And you left the clearance for that to the window?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so again, it would be like there is nothing there.
Okay.
It would look the same as cutting through two feet of granite or just having a small bend.
Okay, appreciated, thank you.
Okay, John, um, comment?
Yeah. Um, well, I have to say first that our regulations say that you can't do this. Um, it's a constant problem and over the years, we've had to, we've had, our hands have been tied and we've had to turn down. A number of projects. Because they wanted some visible, form visible, form of visible vent intake or exhaust. In the front yard and the regulations treat the gardens as very important elements. Of the design. There are certain elements, fire warning, uh, Siamese pipes that are exempt. Because they're fire department and, and uh. Well, leave it at that because they're fire department. But the only time that we have allowed something that I'm aware of. Was because a, an applicant was able to build a vent that was inside of the building. And vented through a hi- essentially a hidden panel, John, I don't know if you remember it.
I do.
Yeah.
It was, it was the um, restaurant on uh, Franklin Blackstone Square.
Essentially the same and, and.
Mm-hmm.
And we had, we actually had a townhouse one, too, that I think was the same gentleman who first proposed aluminum windows.
Mm-hmm.
I can't remember his name, um, and.
David Parker.
Yes, they weren't actually in the front yard, so. I think, I think the commission though, but this has become a bigger problem. And it's becoming more and more of a problem, uh, we're seeing more of these applications. Um, so it's a hu- it's a tough decision for the. For the commission to do and I think to make, I, I think. Paint isn't, can't be the whole answer.
Mm-hmm.
Um. Because, and we also can't take into account the plantings. We have to treat this as if there were no plantings, um.
Because plantings are removable?
Are, are removable and in this case, these plantings may not even be uh. Plants that were, would have been in a uh, historic garden, but. That's beside the point at this point, we don't regulate the plant material, um. So it's a very difficult decision and it's gonna set, if we were to allow this, it's gonna set a huge precedent. So I don't think, in my mind, the commission can do this tonight, uh, I, I think it's gonna take. Some more, as much as I appreciate how clever you've been about this. Um, and Chris is right, by the way, uh, you can core through two foot granite wall or a professional can. Relatively easily, it's noisy and messy for uh, half a day, but that's it. Um. But I don't, in my mind, that doesn't solve the problem and I'm not sure what does and I'm interested in my fellow commissioners' comments. Because this is gonna keep happening, we need to find a solution.
Right, um, I, I ki- I agree with um, Commissioner Freeman. Um, I think this is very difficult to approve, um, regardless of how many pipes you may see in front gardens, um, we. Um, didn't have the opportunity to review them, um, so they don't have design approval from the commission. Um, except perhaps for the um, fire department um, equipment. Um, and um. I, I do appreciate the effort you've made to be responsive to comments from last time, but it, it's very difficult because our regulations say no. Um, we can't do this, we can't approve this, um. There might be something you can do with the design, what, what, what is behind the window? That's at grade, is that the mechanical room or is the mechanical room a floor below that?
It's a floor below.
So is that an occupied room?
The one behind the window, yes.
Yeah. So, um.
Can you just point to where, to make sure we all understand where you're plan, proposing to bring this out?
You see where the red dot is, if you go all the way left in that semi circle?
That's your window?
That's the window well.
Okay.
So there's no wall there, what, how does the gravel in the window well stay where it is?
There is a panel on top, holding with some rebar, holding the gravel.
A horizontal panel?
Correct.
So in the mechanical room, it's just empty space?
Correct.
So that, that's why I was asking what the wall was below the window, there is no wall, that's what you, you were trying to tell me.
I guess, yes, in that semi circle, yes, correct.
The, the, okay, now, now I understand, um. Uh. Yeah, I, I don't know what else to say though about the, how we can approve this, um. I. Also wanna say, you know, setting new standards is not something we. Um, we actually say within design approvals, um, the approval of. Um, anything we do is, is on a case by case basis, because as you said. Um, Juan, uh, technology changes over time, there may not be a need to do this in the future, um, and um. Or different heating systems may come about that don't require this, so for others, so um, I wouldn't wanna. Um, have you say that you're setting a standard for Union Park or the district, because that's not really what we do here. Um, so, um. Uh, with that said, um, I'm, I'm not keen on this proposal at all. Um, uh, as John said, the gardens are a. A char- character defining feature of the district, they're described in the regulations, uh, they're as important as windows and stoops. Um, and doors and brick facades, so we have to treat them equally. Um, and um. Uh, you know, if, if we were to approve this, um, my, my comments would be to um. Uh, ensure that the elbow within the window well is not visible at all and that it be, that nevertheless. It be painted like the vertical pipe would be, um, in the event that the. Crushed down or gravel around it is removed, um. Uh, or migrates and exposes it.
That is very doable.
The other thing is that the um, inside of the pipe, at least for the first. Six or eight inches from the top down would also need to be painted, because you wouldn't wanna see. The outside.
Yes.
Looking like cast iron and the inside.
Also part of the plan, yes.
John, are you suggesting we can approve this?
No, but I'm suggesting, no, but I'm suggesting, John, that if you and I are outvoted. That those things be taken into account.
Got it, okay, that's fair, that's totally fair.
Um, but I, I don't plan to vote in favor of this. Um, I think there have to be other ways to solve this problem, um, if there is a way that you can. Create a vent within the window while you say that there is just rebar and. And some horizontal board that's holding up that gravel. Um, if there was a way you could design your air intake within.
Uh, by law, it has to be thirty six inches from the ground.
Okay. Well, then you're. You, you're in a difficult position, um, so, um.
The whole building is, at this point.
Right. So, um, is this a heating unit for every unit in the building?
That's correct, and hot water.
Mm-hmm, okay. So, um, alright then, uh, I've made my comments, so, um. I guess we need to have a motion. And, um.
I'm trying to figure out how to make the motion and, and, and have it. Uh, be appropriate and, um. Uh, I mean, I'd like to, I'd like to make the motion that we pass this if, with the provisos that. It goes through the granite. And it is made to mock up to look like that cast iron, I think, uh. That, that is my proposal.
They need to have a mockup prior to building this for approval?
Uh, with the proviso that they would mock that up better than this and paint it and then have it go to staff?
I'm suggesting that you do, yes.
I think that is a. I think that's a good solution, I mean, I think that's the motion. That, um, we go through the granite, uh, to minimize anything on the outside. And then have the thirty six inches above the ground, uh, painted to mimic the cast iron or the copper or whatever. Is gonna look like an original piece of. Piping. And uh, prior to that, that the mockup gets um, passed by staff. How is that was a mishmash?
Um, so we need a second, did somebody second and I didn't hear? We need a second.
John, can I make a clarifying comment before seconded?
Um, you may.
Okay, so I think when we looked at this in September, one of the key words in the language. That was presented, which was prohibiting. Uh, the commission from approving this, uh, was the word in invisible, that it's, that it's invisible. Uh, to the straight, um. I think the intent is to be invisible, this has not gotten there at this point. But I do think that Chris's solution will go a long way to, um, uh. Rendering it very nearly invisible, whether the vegetation is there or not. So if that is what the motion intends. For the changes to accomplish, then I, 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 I will uh, second Chris's motion.
Okay. Um, then we have a motion and it's been seconded, um, we can go to public comment, um.
Do we, sorry, can we just repeat it and I, I think it'll help for public comment as well?
Repeat the motion?
Yeah.
Uh, um, Chris?
I think as we have it combined now, that we have moved to uh. Approve this with the proviso that the exhaust goes through the granite, staying in that corner. Avoids the window well and comes up next to the cast iron and is uh. Made to mimic the cast iron and that proposal is, um. Is, will be, uh, need to wait upon the uh, approval of the mockup. I- in place in the garden, which is basically the painted up, uh. The, the painted pipe as it would be shown above the ground.
Okay. Um, Chris, if they just, I'm gonna ask if you can amend your motion. If, if they decided rather than painting the entire pipe as a mockup, um. Could they submit a piece of PVC to staff that is painted in the manner that they are proposing?
I think so, yes.
So that they don't have to do the entire thirty six inch pipe as a mockup and then have it be rejected. Potentially.
Art, art time they have.
Yeah.
I mean, get a piece of PVC, then do the whole thing, but if they even took the thirty six inches there and painted half of it. With all their dabblings and, and sand and chalkboard paint, then I think that would be good for staff.
Right. So, um, and Felicia, do you accept that? Since you seconded?
Yes, I do.
Okay, so we have a motion, it's been seconded, we will um, go to public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform, if you're calling in and cannot use the platform. You can press star nine to raise, raise your hand, or you can send your questions to staff via email. At southendlbc@boston.gov. And, um, uh, Jackie, do we have anybody raising their hand and, or did we get any mail in comments?
So, um, in case anyone is taking their time to raise their hand. Um, staff wants to note the, to the commission that there were three letters of support that were received via email. Uh, for the September hearing, uh, and these are all in support.
Okay, thank you, and no, no hands raised?
Currently, I do not see any hands raised or anything in my inbox.
Um, then we'll go to a vote?
Excuse me, this is Ann Sheridan, I can't figure out how to raise my hand, so I apologize.
Okay.
I'm an owner at twenty-two Union Park and I'm a little disappointed that. So many of our neighbors have put in so much worse. Intake pipes in their gardens that are so visible, crossing across the entire garden. And we're working so diligently to do it the right way, that I'm really disappointed. That the landmarks commission cannot. I mean, this, there's, as Juan said, this is new technology and we, I guess we're lucky we have indoor plumbing at this point. I mean, this cannot be Disneyland, people live here, we need heat. We can't afford Juan and Diana who live in that unit to have uh, the impact of, of um. Carbon monoxide, I mean, this is, and, and we spent a lot of money getting a high efficiency. to have the impact of carbon monoxide. I mean, this is, and we spent a lot of money getting a high efficiency boiler. And without this intake pipe, we're hopeful we're going to have heat this this winter. So I really wish that whoever dictates the restraints on owners in the South End would have a broader view and look at how technology is changing, how lifestyles are changing, and how you have to change your regulations so that we can live here safely and happily. Because I don't know why people stay here. If you can't just put a pipe and we've bent over backwards to accommodate your comments of a month ago. And it's very discouraging to know that we have to go back again. I appreciate, because I see, I see the other neighbors.
Excuse me, Ann, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. The motion is actually to approve this. Are you aware of that?
No, it sure didn't sound that way.
Okay, well, please listen carefully.
Okay.
The motion, we're about to vote after your comment.
Okay.
But the motion was to approve the proposal.
Okay, and one other comment.
Sure.
Any are the other neighbors who are not coming to you, do they, did they get any kind of wrist slapping or anything? Is we're
They have to, it has to be reported as a violation to us. We don't actively go out and and look for violations. They tend to be reported to us by people in the neighborhood.
Good to know.
Okay.
Yep.
Is there anyone else raising their hands? Jackie?
No.
Okay, great. So we'll go to a vote. Chris?
Aye.
Felicia?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
John?
Nay.
And the chair votes no. So the vote is three to two, so the motion carries. So Juan, good presentation.
Thank you. Appreciate your time, folks.
Sure. And Juan, please, I would just appreciate you not talking up with your neighbors that you've created a new standard for the
No, 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 that was just for you folks. Yeah, no.
Because because so far as I'm concerned, we have not created a new standard for the district.
I appreciate that. I was, I guess, me trying to sweet talk you and saying like we're trying to
Nice try.
Exactly. But quick question, I'm guessing instructions will be sent after the meeting is
Yes, you can work with staff on moving forward.
Okay. And if you folks have any contractors that work granite that you can recommend, we would appreciate greatly.
I think Chris probably has some. Technically, we can't recommend particular contractors. But off the record, Chris probably has some.
Okay.
Juan, you're clearly a clever guy, so keep thinking about this, will you?
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go to the next application now, which is 86 Pembroke Street. The proposed work is to install decorative sconces at the entryway pilasters. There are also additional items under administrative review for this application. So if the applicant is here, please unmute and please give us your full name.
Hi, John. Thank you. Mark Ryan Brockman and Mark Design here representing the project. How are you? How are you all? Great. So this is a pretty, pretty straightforward presentation. The request, the application is to install two sconces on the pilasters of the entry surround at 86 Pembroke. The project site, can you zoom out? Eric Rachel, I've seen the, there we go. There's a few pages we don't need to see. If you want to just jump to, maybe the second to last page. So we're proposing to install these two sconces in a bronze finish on the flat portion of the brownstone pilasters. I know that this goes nowhere, but on the next page will show you precedent of nearly every single other brownstone on Pembroke Street having installed pairs of sconces, not original, on the flat portion of pilasters. That being said, I'm not allowed to say that. So this is the new application with no precedent having been set. I think I think that's it. The number of additional admin review items include restoring the surround, painting the doors a more pleasant color, and some restoration of the of the cast iron railings. So the rest of the of the project being spruced up, and this is just one last item.
And a reminder to the commission that the light fixture themselves, the light fixtures themselves is exempt. It's just the installation through the existing brownstone that we'll discuss here.
Thank you for that clarification, Rachel. So we'll ask first if commissioners have any questions. John? Any questions?
How hard is it to patch brownstone?
It's incredibly easy, much easier to patch the flat brownstone than any decorative element and much easier to patch than a brick. I think you that's my answer.
So if these were removed at some point in the future, you think you could patch the brownstone so it would be invisible?
Correct. And what part of the admin level review items, what is to patch and restore the brownstone that's currently being undergone?
So you're currently doing that to bring this brownstone up to to refresh it, to essentially restore it?
Correct.
Correct. And how big is the hole that you're proposing?
It's a very small hole. I believe we need a junction box. This is a European style fixture, so it'll be a slim junction box. I think the junction box is actually inside. Sorry. So the hole is maybe a half inch diameter.
So it's a remote junction box with a half inch hole?
Yes, correct.
Looks like two holes based on the proposed sconce picture that's there.
There might be, no, there should be just one hole for the wire and then however the mounting happens, which I I can pull up the mounting.
The mounting could be something, a piece of like?
Let me look at the
Elk row.
If it isn't clear, I'm trying to help you out here.
It's actually not clear on the on the cut sheet either. I can come back to you with that. But I would imagine like most sconces, there's like a galvanized plate that probably requires two screws. There's probably three holes total per pilaster, one for the wire, and then two screws per mounting plate. Then the decorative plate is attached with a set screw, a concealed set screw.
Okay. Any other questions, John?
No.
Okay, Felicia, any questions?
No.
Kevin, any questions?
No, thanks.
Chris, any questions?
I do have one more for staff. So do we, is there a preference between the one hanging light that might come out of the roof of a hood or the underneath of a hood as opposed to the two sconces?
I mean, we, again, we don't regulate like fixtures themselves, but that does perhaps sound as the less invasive way to illuminate the entryway.
So I, there are a couple of examples on the street that do have a pendant hanging from the hood, the flat portion of the hood, none in my presentation. I talked to my design team that is less desirable because we do have a decorative fixture inside the foyer at the transom. And it's kind of strange to have two decorative fixtures in the same area. Again, that's not a big reason, but
There was a preference, because I've seen the canister lights that don't
Right.
They're just right at the top of the hood, which would not be in front of the transom.
That's right. That's like a can light, a canister light that you could mount on the underside of the hood. You could even recess a can light into the hood if that were even possible. So and and it wouldn't have a decorative conflict with the light in the transom, nor would it block any architectural detail. So which is, I think, a concern both for the sconces or an ornamental pendant light versus just a a simple can.
I like the flush mount, too. That's a good idea, John.
Yeah. So anyway, I jumped to my comment, but I felt like cutting to the chase would help. John?
Helped a lot. I withdraw my questions. I think that that's the solution we should encourage.
Yeah, because I think any kind of drilling through original material is just discouraged, not discouraged. It's actually, we're told you can't do it.
Yeah, you can't do it.
So yeah. I mean, I realize the brownstone is in need of its own restoration, but that's beside the point. We don't want to add further degradation to the brownstone.
And I see it on every, it's like half the houses on the block have sconces on the side. But if if it would be acceptable to the design team, I think we have to really encourage it.
Right.
The pendant or the flush mount.
Yeah. So Kevin, did you have any further comments based on the discussion we're having?
No, thank you.
And Felicia? Do you have any comments you'd like to add based on our discussion?
No, but I think I agree with John and the two Johns, I guess I would say, for the canister light fixture. I wasn't allowed to comment on the actual, the actual light fixtures. I have lots of comments on those, but this is the solution.
Yeah.
Great. And and thank you, Chris, for raising the issue first. So I think we might be ready for a motion. So
That's a terrifying question. I don't like, if I can ask it now or later, but
You can ask it now.
I anticipate pushback from my design team. I don't have much control over them. If this is denied, can I come back and as another conversation or is that oh, yeah, done deal?
That's a good question, Mark. Let me ask Rachel procedurally what happens here. Rachel, if we were to say they could come back with a flush mount or a pendant canister light.
Well, we could approve that tonight.
Yeah, could we do that with a proviso?
We can approve that with the proviso and you wouldn't have to come back to the commission.
I guess what I'm saying is
I guess his point is
Well, you can tell your design team that this is what is approvable and that what they want is not approvable, so they can push back all they want.
Yeah, understood. And they're not here right now, so I'm just Gabriel.
Their option might be to do nothing if they don't like the approved provisos.
Understood. Thank you.
Okay. So great. So I think we're ready for motion.
I will go ahead and try this one again, John.
Go ahead.
I move that we accept this application with the proviso that they don't install the proposed sconce, sconces. But instead, do one or two flush mount, not flush mount. You know what I'm trying to say?
Canister?
Canister.
Either it just, maybe not even the canister, but the I've got
recessed?
Yes, thank you very much. I was thinking, I eat pancakes, maybe might even work or something, but so my proposal is to I I move that we accept this proposal, but that they, with the proviso that they not install the proposed sconce, sconces against sconces. And we do a recessed canister or two in in the ceiling of the hood.
If their recess two is acceptable, if it's a pendant below, they should just do one in the middle, not to conflict with the design of the woodwork over the transom. Do you accept that amendment, Chris?
And I would like to propose amendment that final detail be remanded to staff.
Okay, we have a community motion. Do you accept that amendment, Chris?
I do.
Okay, and we're looking for a second.
Second.
A little second.
John, Felicia, so we have a second. So we have a motion. It's been seconded. We can ask for public comment. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And Jackie, do we have anybody raising their hand? Or do we have any emailed comments?
I do not see any raised hands and there's nothing in our inbox for this application.
Okay, great. Thank you. So we'll go right to a vote then. Kevin?
Aye.
Felicia?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
John?
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. Thank you very much. And please contact staff with any questions and you'll get a letter from them. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you. Thank you all. Thank you.
Sure. So we'll go to the next application now, which is 40 West Newton Street. And the application is to install a new roof deck. So if the applicant is here, you can unmute yourself and please give us your full name.
Hi, this is, I'm really sorry. This is Bridget Williams. I'm the architect for the project and I have to apologize. There's a huge demonstration going on outside. I can't get away from the noise, but are you hearing the noise a lot?
We're not.
Okay, good. Right.
And we can hear you just fine.
Okay, perfect. So the owner, Roger Samets, is also here. He has lived here in the South End since the 70s and has done a lot of work to restore and maintain his beautiful brownstone overlooking Blackstone Square. What what we would like to do is get approval for a new roof deck on the L of the building. What you see here is the L itself is 40 feet long. And the roof deck we're asking for is 14 feet long and 13 feet wide. And if you go to, so you can see it, it, great, that's great. So the exterior for the exterior, we're taking as a model the the vernacular of the drawing yards that existed on roof decks at times in the South End. We have horizontal boards with spacing between them on the south and north sides. And then the west side is has a small area where we'd like to put three pipe rails to complete the the guard. The in in the proposal, the wood is shown as weathered. But we are happy to take guidance on on painting it if that is preferable. So these are photographs of the context. The, I think the commissioners may have seen that a mockup was put up there last Friday. So they have more more sense of of how minimal this is. But this is looking across the community garden and then down Haven Street. You can just see the edge of the railing to the side of the wood frame house there. And the closer you get, the less you see. And the, and when you're right next to it, you can't see it at all. The biggest view is, I think, on the next sheet, which is from all the way across in the entrance to the garage of the new building that has flour in it. You can see the ballard, the yellow ballard right there. So if you pull all the way back.
Are you, are you driving the presentation or is Rachel?
Rachel is.
Rachel, could you use your cursor to point to the building in question? So that we can be sure we're understanding this properly?
I can, I can write on it. It's right here.
Yeah, it's it. You can do that.
Okay. And in the, in the left picture? Is it the one
In the left picture, it's right here.
Okay. Great.
Sorry, good point. I forgot I could, I have more power than I thought.
Uh huh. Thank you, Bridget. Carry on.
Sure. So and I think that if you keep going, you'll see that there's the, you know, it's you'll see that, uh, there's the, you know, it's, it, it, the, the new deck would go out just beyond the skylight that's there. And we put a, a flat skylight there on top of it. Um, from, uh, on the, on the the view to the west, um, you can see, uh, the adjacent L, uh, masking it primarily. Um, this is a very different kind of building up here, the, the new building, but it does have pipe rail on it, we noticed. Um, okay, so the next slide. The adjacent roofs have, uh, as you can see, large uh, decks with, um, fairly ornate ironwork. Um, taking up the full length of the L.
None of those would have been approved by the commission.
I wouldn't have thought so. Uh, okay, so the next picture uh, shows similarly, the, uh, huge deck um, to the south. Uh, there's a picture of the proposed material, but as I said, we would take guidance on, on whether that should be painted or or weathered, given the kind of modest, uh, uh, model of the drying yards.
Mm hmm.
And, um, I think that might be it.
Okay. Um, yes, thank you, Bridget. That was, that was all helpful. We're going to ask commissioners for questions first and then um, go to comments after that and then make a motion and ask, ask for public comment before we vote. So, um, I'm going to ask for questions. Kevin, do you have any questions?
Um, no, but I might ask to, I might ask for leave to ask a question in a few minutes, sorry.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, we can always come back to you, just give us a shout. Um, Chris?
I apologize for missing the first portion of that, uh, presentation, and I just wanted to see the, the rails, the, the, the new rails that you were proposing. Is this them right there?
Uh, right, yeah. So th- these are the three, uh, pipe rails that we are asking to put. So we, the, the uh, boards come around the corner to establish the enclosure and then there is a section where we'd like to, you know, at a certain height, put, put rails. And again, we take guidance on color. We were thinking of dark gray.
And the, the, this is from, I just came in right when you were showing the, the building in behind that on Haven Street and these are visible?
Not really.
If you go back, if you go back to that, like standing next to Flower or Haven Street, Rachel.
Yeah, and a reminder when the roof.
Right, right, excuse me. Roger, can you give us your full name, please? Because you aren't.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry. So, uh, not sure why I look so red. Roger Samets, I first renovated this building in nineteen seventy-nine and saved it from imminent collapse. Um, and I'm renovating, uh, two floors, which is underway to actually live in. Um, I'm one of those few people that actually, you know, keeps things rental and doesn't flip things into condos. Um, and this, the deck that's there, I built in nineteen seventy-nine, um, which conceivably predated you guys. Um, and, uh, managed to make it for forty-five years, but, um, it needs to be replaced. And so like I've done in the past, well, I've put in, you know, perfect wood double hung windows and no insets and real divided lights and slate roofs. Um, I'm in front of you guys. I think this is a pretty modest proposal. As you can see in both of these pictures, and this is why you asked, you can barely see it. Um, and, uh, we would hope you would approve this modest proposal.
Thank you very much, Roger. Um, so, uh, I'm sorry, Rachel, I cut you off. Can you, um, continue with what you were saying?
Yeah, I was just gonna, um, remind the commissioners that when we have a roof deck on an L like this, it, it is going to be visible, so the regular standard of having a minimally visible or not visible roof deck um, isn't applicable for, in these cases, it's about having that horizontal wood board design.
Yeah.
Almost completely what they are presenting minus the proposed clear rails.
Yeah, this is, this is a unique case because the Ls were used historically for drying clothes. The roofs of the Ls and there's photographic evidence to show that. And that the enclosures for the drying yards were wood with horizontal boards. Um, and that was clear in the historic photographs. And so this is because those drying yards were visible from the street, that became a model to allow the, in our regulations, to allow a visible roof deck only when it's on an L, but it has to be enclosed in this fashion. So that's the background for that, particularly since we have some commissioners, um, new to the district, um, new to the commission, uh, and I think this might be our first L roof deck for the new, the commissioners who are new on the commission. So, um, so that's the background for that. Um, so, uh, anyway, um, I think we were on questions and I came to you, Chris.
Yes, you did, and, uh, I, thank you, you showed me what I need to see.
Okay, great. Um, John, questions?
I, yes, uh, I think, I, I mean, what, everything you just said is also my understanding and we've approved a number of these, but my question is, why are you doing the, the pipe rails? Because that's the one thing that breaks the model. And are they not visible at all?
They're, 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 I mean, you only see that little bit of the corner, so presumably you could see, you know, if you really wanted to look up and concentrate, you could probably see a foot of them on the right-hand side. Um, the, the reason Bridget and I did it was to not have it feel as crib-like um, when one is on the deck and to have a little, um, a little transparency there. Um, you know, if you guys really objected and we lined it up with the uh, spaces in the wood to try to make it, make sense out of the whole thing.
Hmm.
Um, you know, they're only, you know, an inch. Um, they could be black, they could, you know, certainly like the fire escapes. It, it was a design thing to make it a little more interesting and to have a little more airflow and transparency.
And I, uh, I, um, I think we also felt that it was part of a very modest vernacular that are part of the drying yards and almost, uh, you know, just as good for drying as anything else.
Okay, thanks, Bridget. So, um, I don't have any other questions. Um, so I think we can go to comments. So, um, uh, K- Kevin, do you have any comments?
No, thank you.
Um, Chris, do you have any comments?
No.
Okay, Felicia, comments?
No comments.
Um, John?
Um, sure. Roger, we're aware of this building, you know, we've seen other things on Haven Street. You've done wonderful things to this building. I think, uh, commissioners who've been here a long time are very aware of that and we really appreciate it. Uh, I think the proposal for the drying yard type of, uh, deck is exactly correct. Um, I think the only question is the piece on the end with the bars. I'm looking at Google Maps and, uh, I'm sorry, the Google Street View. And I think it would be minimally visible. And we are allowed some appearances if they're minimally visible. If you could, uh, maybe, uh, while you're under construction, have staff out and if you don't mind sort of working it a little bit better to make sure that it's minimally visible, not up or down, but in from the sides. Um, I think we could, in my opinion, uh, I think we could approve this.
Okay, uh, thanks, John. Um, I have, my comments differ a little bit. Um, I, I think it's very important to be true to the model. Um, and I think there are some ways of getting you what you would like. Um, without having to interrupt the wood model, um, with the pipe rail. It's a nice design. Um, unfortunate, you know, we're, we're not in the business, though, of approving nice designs. We, we're you know, we, we have to follow the regulations, which is what we, we do and, um, you know, the regulations describe the model and you've been very good about, um, the model, um, with the exception of the interruption with the pipes. And, um, one thing I think I can suggest, if you're looking for a little bit more airflow, is the, the historic models actually had larger gaps between the wood planks. Um, and if you want to increase the, the spacing of your wood planks, I think, um, you could do so and get better airflow that way. Um, your, your, um, fence, your fence is also, um, forty-eight inches high. I presume from the level of the deck, it looks that way, but, um, I think code would only require you to be at forty-two. So, you know, if you wanted to minimize the sense of enclosure, you could lower your rail to forty-two inches. Um, and so those would be my two comments that would help you with your sense of um, can, you know, not feeling too confined and getting a little bit more airflow, um, without having to interrupt the, the true model of the wood wrapping around the three sides, um, which I think would be important to uphold. Um, and, uh, I think the finish of the wood could be, um, weathered. Um, because I think in the historic photos, the drying yards were not painted. Um, they were, uh, weathered wood. Um, so I think they could, you're, in your proposal, you, I would find it approvable um, for your, your proposal, um, as weathered wood.
Right, we were, we were thinking mahogany, which of course will go gray.
Mm hmm.
That's fine.
Yeah. Yeah, that would be, that would be fine.
And I, I'd like to mention one more thing that was just, the reason, the reason the rail is high is that there are those really huge roof decks flanking it on both sides, so we were interested in having both a little bit of privacy and that release at the end. So that's, that's the logic behind making it higher.
Okay, you're welcome to keep it forty-four feet. I, I was just suggesting it if you were feeling it was too enclosed. Um, but, uh, four feet would be approvable as well as, as shown.
Well, okay, I mean, I'd like, I'd like to have one more push for the railings, because I think it's a really, I mean, as you said, you're not in the business of approving nice designs, although I think it's an interesting design, but, you know, you this takes up less than a third of the L. Um, and, you know, Haven Street is like straight up, so, you know, unless you're walking out of Flower with your sixteen dollar sandwich, um, you really can't see this.
Mm hmm.
We also, we also did the logo for Flower.
Right.
That's right.
Flower customers aside, we have people walking up and down the sidewalk there, um, all the time. It's a busy sidewalk, busy corner. Um, and, and Haven Street, um, in the back of West Newton Street, um, attracts people's, um, eye. Because it's just an interesting configuration that you don't see elsewhere in the district. Um, interesting configuration of buildings. And the, the whole point of the drying yard model is that it's plain. It's unornamented. And so adding this level of ornament, however simple and elegant as it is, is counter to the, counter to the model. So, um, I would, I would advocate for not having the rail.
John? What if, what if the rails were made out of the same material? Or it was just a gap in the railing, the, in the boards going across?
I, I was, I, yeah, sorry, I, I was going to ask if, if, if we spaced them more uh, far, if we spaced them farther apart, could we do it in a, in a given area?
Um, it might look odd to turn the corner and have the spacing change, but.
Well, it, it might change right where the railing is, where the pipe rail is.
Right, right. Um,
Only.
Still, still, that's something that would, that might catch the eye, but, you know, if you can carry I, I would suggest you submit something to staff, but have maybe the top wood board carries all the way across. And then you do something underneath it with, you know, um, wider spacing of boards or thinner boards or whatever, but in the same, John, I think that's a good idea.
I think carrying the board across the top is a really good idea, too.
Right, just keep, and keeping the material the same. So just a variation in the way the material is used, um, I think is a nice alternative.
Well, I think having a single one by four board across is going to look sort of thin and flimsy and I'd rather cam the whole railing, but I'm, you know, like Ann Sheridan, I'm a little disappointed.
Right, I, I didn't suggest that. I said, carrying a board across the top and then you could have additional boards below it that are spaced farther apart. Um, instead of using rails, um, they could be thinner boards, the spacing could be wider to let, let visibility and airflow through. Um, it would still be a, a portal, um, if you will.
I, I think I'd give up, I think I'd give up the pipe railing.
Your choice.
Well.
Is this something, is this something that we can, uh, get an approval in concept and work out? Okay, and, and Roger, I'm thinking that, um, since the pipe rail is such a hard sell, maybe there is a configuration that is wood that, um, we can propose.
Well, can I make a suggestion for, for a motion?
I was just saying, yeah.
Go ahead, John.
I think, uh, so I would say, uh, I'd make a motion to approve this in concept, uh, with the drawings as shown and the provisos that uh, the designers and architects, uh, who have shown quite a lot of ability to, uh, uh, work with staff on some variations that would be acceptable to both for this one part. That's an opening, taking the suggestions, you know, some of which could work, uh, same material or not, same, uh, alternate board spacing or not and carrying across the top or not. And, uh, just remand that part to staff. And staff, as always, has the right to bring a commissioner into the discussion or two if they want to.
Mm hmm. So that's a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and it's been seconded. So, um, let's go to the public comment.
Sorry, my computer is see, I'm seeing that little rainbow squirrel down. Almost there.
If public are wondering why we're silent, I'm waiting for the script to appear.
Yeah, sorry, everyone, my computer is being slow and taking minutes to load the slides. My apologies.
Yes.
Come on. I really, oh, oh, okay. Almost know this by heart. Sorry, everyone, I'm so sorry. It's like the Mac Rainbow squirrel.
I guess the, um, computer is telling you it's been a long day for the computer.
All right, can you see it now, John?
I can. Members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you are calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send your questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And, um, Jackie, do we have anybody raising their hand or any emailed comments?
I see no raised hands and I see no emails.
Okay, thank you, Jackie. So we'll go to a vote. Um, Felicia?
Aye.
Uh, Chris?
Aye.
Um, John?
Aye.
Kevin?
Aye.
And, uh, the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. And, um, thank you very much, um, both of you, um, for
Thank you.
Um, your input and also for your dedication and stewardship to this building over the decades. Um, the district is better off for all of the work you've put in and we appreciate that.
Great, well, thank you for your time.
Sure.
Have a good evening.
Yeah, thank you, Roger. Thank you, Bridget.
Thank you, bye bye.
Okay. Um, and, um, we're going to go to the next application, eighty-five Chandler Street. Um, and the, uh, proposed work is to remove and replace the front yard fence. And, uh, let's, uh, if the applicant is here, please give us your full name.
Hi, my name is Carl Hediger. Can you hear me?
Uh, we can.
Great, uh, and if there's some noise in the.
Great, and if there's some noise in the background, I apologize, I'm in a soccer game with my daughter. My wife, Michelle, and I are pretty longtime South End residents. We're also the owner and the builder at eighty-five Chandler Street. And the proposal is for the windows as well as the garden railing. The windows are currently a mix of vinyl and aluminum.
Excuse me.
This is a reminder, sorry, apologies, just as a reminder to the commission and to the applicants that the window portion of the application has been placed under administrative review. What's currently placed on design review is just purely the front yard.
Gotcha. I apologize for that. My mistake.
Yeah, so just, yeah, just focus on the garden rail then.
Okay, sure, I apologize. So for the garden rail, so it's a little bit of a story here, but basically currently there's this Greek key garden rail there. We were looking to bring it back to the original railing, which we found a picture of from nineteen forty-one. We thought it was very beautiful. And if we could restore it, that was our goal. We looked through the Lawler catalog and we spoke with three ironworks companies. No one could find any components that resemble what was there before. We then, after speaking with Jackie, who, you know, really encouraged us to go for that design, which, which I agree with, we spoke with some custom people that would do like custom casting. And they said, without physical samples, it's pretty much impossible to recreate the railing. So from there, we pivoted and we, because the building is kind of a standalone building, Claridan Street backs up to it on the left side and on the right side is a big condominium building. We tried to find something that was more in keeping with the historic nature of the neighborhood. And on Union Park, which we walk by all the time, we found this railing design that we're proposing at, I believe, six different buildings on Union Park. We thought it was beautiful, it was historically accurate, and it would be a good upgrade, you know, for the building, for the property.
Okay. So Paul, is that your presentation?
Yes. And if you have any questions, obviously, I'm happy to elaborate further.
Sure, thank you. And I believe that Rachel and Jackie circulated the historic photo to the commissioners, but I think it's, it's here if we want to look at it.
Yeah.
So it's on the screen now.
It looks like there's a top rail missing.
It's, it's not missing, John. The top rail has sort of ornamental little finials that march along the top of it. And that's actually the design of the rail.
Uh-huh. Isn't that restricted by code now? Could you still do finials?
It's restricted if they can, if it's something you can impale yourself on, if they're designed in a way that that, that doesn't do that, you can place ornament on the top of the rail.
Okay.
If, if you don't have sharp points, if you, if they're rounded at the top, if they're, you know, that sort of thing. You can, you can have pickets penetrate the top rail. Also, if, you know, again, they're, they're not sharp points or it's squared off or rounded or a shallow, a shallow pyramid. So yeah.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, so you'll also note the corner post is quite robust there. And, and that the bottom rail sits on the curb. So those are some distinctions. So let's go to questions. Felicia, do you have any questions for the applicant? Or staff? About this? Felicia?
I know I do not. Thank you for that.
Sure, Kevin, do you have any questions?
Sure, for Carl, if you're able to. Did you have a chance to look at the photo that, I don't know if you found it or staff found it, and explore options that resemble that?
We, we did, and we did a, an initial proposal that was like kind of more closely resembling that. But it was, even though it was, you know, trying to recreate that design, it was pretty far off. And it would be, you know, more like creating something new in the South End versus something that with precedence that's historically accurate. So we thought it would be better to go this direction with something that, you know, is historically accurate in the neighborhood, that's found around a lot versus trying to you know, recreate something off of a blurry image that's gonna come out in a way that's not accurate.
Okay. I think that's it for now. Thanks.
Okay. Chris, questions?
Questions, just some comments.
Okay, John, any questions?
I don't think I have any questions.
Okay, then. And I don't have any questions, so I think we can go to comments. So Chris, since you're ready with comments, have at it.
I'll just make this comment that I think I have a section of fence that matches the Bainbridge budding photo from whenever that was in my backyard. Looks very, very similar. I mean, it's dark out now, but I can't see it, but that's just a throw it out there. And I rescued that from somewhere. It looks very, very similar. Were you able to find any of those little doodads that sit on top of the top rail in any of the Lawler books or any?
Those, yes, those are available in the Lawler books. There are different variations of those.
Chiming in here, my name's Michelle Hediger. I'm the co-owner of the building with Carl.
Welcome.
The ones in the nineteen forty-one photo actually do have sharp points to it, but in the Lawler catalog, there are kind of rounded. There's a couple acorns. We can do something that will not impale a potential passerby.
And it was the doctor's office, isn't that?
Exactly. It once upon a time was, so it kind of falls in line there, but you know, not the business plan we're going for.
Okay, thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
That was helpful. So I'm sorry, Chris.
I was just saying, I do, I think I have that fence in my backyard. I'm using it as a garden fence in my backyard. But I'm just saying, you know, we don't want to go to the ends of the earth, but the castings like that might be available. But I've done a great job in finding very sturdy-looking fences. I know that we as staff are still looking at some fence things, correct?
Is there a question for staff?
Yeah, it was, actually, yeah, for, yeah. We were looking at different fence styles and subcommittee.
Yeah, for different projects. For different projects, we had looked at different.
Yeah.
So those are my comments.
Okay, so that's great. Kevin, do you have any comments?
Sure, and maybe it's a little bit of a question, but it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle or Carl, it sounds like you'd be open to approval if there was a provision that you included the ornamental design on the top of the flat.
A hundred percent. We want to make this as collaborative as possible with the board and with you guys. Again, as Carl mentioned, we live in the South End. This is actually, these front stoops are more, are extremely important to us. So we'd rather work with you guys and against you.
Well said, Michelle.
Thanks, honey. Thanks, honey.
Okay, anything else, Kevin?
Nope.
Okay, great. Felicia, any comments?
Just echoing Kevin's that would they be open to adding some form of finial on top? Answer. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And
You forgot me.
Yeah, I haven't forgotten you. No, I'm, I was just distracted by the drawing. I was looking at the drawing and I lost my train of thought. Sorry, John, go ahead.
Just because nobody said it, yes, you can get rid of the old fence. No question. So we're, we're working towards this. I love your desire to try to get as close as possible. I think your proposal is pretty close, but if if there seems to be a section of fence in a another resident's backyard, it's worth exploring. I mean, wouldn't it be funny if that turned out to match? And if not, adding the things to the top, I would say keep exploring, but I don't think you need to come back here and can work with staff on that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I would like to just add one comment to my fellow commissioners' comments, which is if it's possible to find a more robust post. And first of all, I want to thank you, as John said, for wanting to come closer to a true historic model. The old fence that you want to replace does not do that. But you can see in the historic photo, the corner post was far more robust. In fact, it was the full width of the curb that it sits on. And the, I don't know if the curb that's there now is the curb that was there in that photo. Sometimes they get replaced, but it looked like there was even something on the curb. Some articulation of the curb to support the corner post. So anyway, my comment would be to see if you could find a more robust corner post that would be even better. It doesn't have to match exactly the one that's in the photo, but it would certainly bring your proposal closer to the model, to the original configuration.
We can absolutely do that. I think the issue and actually the reason why we went with kind of a lesser robust post was if you can see in the nineteen forty-one photo, it's square. Somehow, none of these new catalogs have anything square anymore that's not really super basic. And we felt like that was really unfair to do, and quite frankly, I didn't want to spend my money on something that basic. So the one that we chose actually has a nod to the original with a square topper. But I agree, it's, I think it's about five inches at the bottom. We can do something more robust, but it will be round. And as long as you guys are okay with that, I'm fine bringing up a couple options to everybody.
Yeah, please, please bring options to staff that are a little bit more robust than the one you're showing. But between that and adding some articulation to the top rail, again, to be reminiscent of the original rail, that would be, I think, a really nice thing and an approvable proposal.
Okay.
So that's my comment, and I think we're ready for a motion with that.
Chris, you want to make the motion?
Sure, maybe we'll set a standard here. I move that we accept this proposal with the proviso that the applicant is going to provide to staff some other options and bring us some different corner posts, and that will be done to staff.
Is there a standing railing subcommittee?
That's what I was alluding to earlier, but
Yeah, and is that active, that subcommittee?
No, there's not a standing railing subcommittee. We have a subcommittee for a project and coordinating with the applicant has kind of stalled.
Okay, all right, never mind.
And there's a proviso to that. If you want to look at the example I have in my backyard, you're welcome to show it, too.
We'll come by tomorrow. Be careful what you offer.
Chris, may I amend your motion to just add the articulation on the top rail?
Thank you.
Okay, and that's accepted? So, great, thank you. So I'm waiting, I'll hear a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you, Kevin. So we have a motion and it's been seconded, and we can go to public comment. Hey, Carl, can you mute for a moment?
Yes.
Thanks. So as much as I'm enjoying hearing the game in the background. So members of the public will now have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on the application and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Or you can send questions to staff via email at southendldc@boston.gov. And Jackie, do we have anybody raising their hand or did anyone send in email comments?
We did not get, I've not got any email comments and I do not see anyone raising their hand.
That's great. So can, we can now go to a vote. So Chris.
Aye.
Felicia.
Aye.
Kevin.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, so the motion carries. And I want to thank you, Carl, and I'm sorry, I've forgotten.
Michelle, it's okay. As long as you got one of us, you got both of us.
Yeah, so Carl and Michelle, thank you very much for your collaborative spirit and your commitment to the district. We really appreciate it.
Of course, of course. And Chris, if you want to reach out to us, so we can go foraging.
Let's figure out, yeah.
Staff will put you together.
They'll put us together.
Thank you.
And I'm home tomorrow.
Good.
Sorry to hear that, Chris.
Four more weeks.
Okay, all right. Okay, we're gonna go to administrative review now. So staff will project administrative review. Do I have to read that text? Rachel?
No.
No, I hope not. Okay, so this is administrative review. We've had a chance to look it over. So do I hear a motion to approve administrative review?
So move.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion. It's been seconded. We go right to a vote. So Kevin.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Felicia.
Aye.
John.
Aye.
And the chair votes with the motion, the motion carries. And now we go to an advisory review. I believe we have one on the on the agenda. And that is at fifty-two Plimpton Street. The proposed work is to demolish an existing building in the protection area and to build a new seven-story building.
Hi, my name is Cadreel Tulian. I'm a principal at Stock Architecture. Rachel, would you allow me to share my screen?
Can you see if you can share it? I think you can.
I'm sending you a request.
Okay. You should be able to now.
And I believe you were here before us last month, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. I am, we were here two months ago.
Two months ago.
Yeah, two months ago, as, you know, for advisory hearing, I'm here with Josh Brandt and Matt Kiefer, who are the developers. The building is located at fifty-two Plimpton. I'll do a brief description of the building in case some of you were not on that hearing. I think Mr. Amadeo, you probably were not in the, in the previous hearing. The location is fifty-two Plimpton Street in the protection area of the Landmarks District of the South End. This is a seven-story building with forty-four units, is a low-rise building below seventy feet. It has eight affordable live-work units that are reserved for artists. And it has a component of art gallery that is publicly accessible and is kind of designed to activate the street edge and to contribute to the cultural environment of, of the protection area. Let me see if I can share now. There you go. Sorry about that. I was just talking without sharing anything. Can you see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Great. So the, the building seeks to kind of balance the contemporary performance of a residential building of today with kind of like the sensibility of, of the architectural context of the South End through kind of, you know, a mindful massing of, of the building, the engagement of the street edge and the, you know, careful selection of materials. And given the fact that we presented it two months ago and we've, we've done some updates based on your feedback from our last meeting, we, we wanted to come back and share with you some of the updates that we have done. Uh we um we wanted to come back and and share with you some of the updates that we have done. As 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 we usually do, on the left-hand side, the the part that has the gray area uh of the image shows the previous building as we proposed it um back in August. And the right-hand side shows the same image but with the changes that we've done since then. Um as you can see on the left, the the entry um originally had our art gallery um taking the corner of the building and the accessible ramp for ADA access to the building was wrapping around the gallery. Um uh the main entry of the residential portion of the building then being kind of sandwiched between the units and the gallery in this uh passage that you see here. Um in the new updated version, um following kind of like the concerns that you e- express in regards to the fact that the the ADA access was separated from the main uh point of entry, we consolidated both um uh entry uh uh um elements, the ramp and the main stair to access um right at the corner. Um these opened up the corner um to to the air, making it more prominent. And as we are discussing with our um structure engineer currently, in order to maintain this corner as open as possible and as glassy as possible, there was an issue of lateral bracing that we are solving kind of in a sculptural way with this V-shaped uh column that supports the corner while providing the lateral bracing that we need in order to maintain this transparency all the way to the interior courtyard in the back. Here is the diagram of before and after of that um accessible path. Um on the left, you can see the on the red, the um accessible ADA path through the ramp. Uh and on the blue, the the pedestrian path. And then you can see on the right how both now uh access into the same point, just arrive at the same point to access the building. The separation of uses on the ground floor was uh changed slightly, ma- making the component of the art gallery uh larger. This will be uh an independent, independently managed art gallery and, you know, is the intention that the artists that live on the eight units that are on the ground floor um would be able to um exhibit some of their work in here. Um or as well as, you know, any other artists, it's it will be a a public art gallery. The the gallery now has a split uh kind of divided uh components where the the, you know, with the lobby between them, the access lobby between them and having an area toward the street to maintain that active edge and that kind of like presence of the art exhibit onto the street. At the same time, the main element of the gallery situated toward the back opens up to an interior courtyard on the on the back of the building that also serves kind of like a spill-out area for art exhibits. Another concern that the commission had expressed was uh regarding the facade and the fact that the ground floor units, which are duplex units, these are the uh live-work art studios or, you know, art uh units. They uh their their arrangement of the windows was not aligned with the windows above, which um was, you know, was the desire to like kind of follow more the 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 aesthetic of the of the Southern Protection Area by aligning the windows, um which is more in accordance with with the context. And so we've we've kind of reorganized the facade and and moved the windows around and changed them so that they can align. You can see the new facade on the right-hand side. Um another comment was that um the glass rings that we were proposing on the previous uh uh version were to be replaced by um, you know, uh black painted uh steel railings, which is our intention. So you can see here a close-up of the building. Uh we've replaced uh all the gl- all the glazing uh on the railings that we had before with um with metal railings. Regarding the sidelines, um there was a concern uh to see what kind of uh measures are we taking regarding the screening of mechanical equipment on the um on the roof of the project. And this being an all-electric passive house building, the mechanical equipment and mechanical systems that are outside the units that are very small. Um they are limited to these uh heat pump units that are no more than four feet tall and they can be grouped um on on the roof uh away from the edges. And so we've taken care to place any units and you can see these little squares in here on top of the unit and how uh from across the street and even from much further away, the sidelines uh or through the edge of the building, um you know, are are they go beyond the the any mechanical equipment and you cannot see any mechanical equipment even from Albany Street, even going all the way to Albany Street, you look at the building and you're not able to see any of the mechanical units. Um there was um some questions regarding the exterior materials that we were proposing. We are proposing this masonry. Um it it's a it's a uh a cover brick material um that clads the the main facade of the building. Um it's it's almost like a brick shingle. It's um it's it's brick, but it's installed uh in in a shingle fashion. And um Mr. Freeman, you know, was concerned about us being able to detail this material in the proper way. We uh found a precedent in the city of Boston. Um nearby actually is uh uh thirty-five West Second Street in Boston, um where they use the same material and they detail it in the way that we would, which is basically framing the material within these uh, you know, uh steel metal angles. It's almost like you have to frame uh every every uh kind of portion of the material and be being careful around the windows um to 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 kind of like keep this material uh nicely framed. There is no caulk or any kind of uh, you know, uh adhesive attached to the edge of it. It's a rain screen, so um it's mainly uh, you know, mechanically fastened directly to a to a substrate. And um and then it's just like in a box and and framed at these um metal angles. On the top floor, we are um proposing, you know, the floor set but is is set back, you know, between four and and eleven feet from the edge, um creating the penthouse. And we are proposing that this is uh done in a corrugated uh metal finish uh being this uh a matte gray finish to stay away from any kind of shiny material, but to maintain this kind of like texture that that is more in tune with the um kind of like industrial feeling of of the protection area. And I think that's here are some more close-up images of of the uh the cover brick. How it connects to the corner and how kind of like every edge is um framed by um these metal frames. I think that's that's the end. Is there any questions or comments?
Yeah, we'll get to both. Um thanks for that um presentation, um Catrill. So um we'll uh start with uh questions and I will go to John. John, are you ready with any questions? Well, while we're waiting for John, I will go to um Chris. Any questions?
I I do. I I like the changes you made. Thank you very much. Um uh I do have a question as as a homeowner, thinking about maintenance. And uh I know you've these metal uh frames, if you will, that go down the corners and around the windows and everything. Are are they steel?
They are. They are steel, yes. It's painted steel.
They're pardon what's?
Painted steel, yes.
Yeah, so will they ever need maintenance? Will they need painting?
Uh I I would imagine that eventually uh they they may need maintenance. However, they are not um on areas that are, you know, in 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 contact with with traffic or anything like that on the cities right at the base. Um so I would imagine that it it would require as much maintenance as any, you know, uh metal element uh like a a railing or a fence or a or a any iron work on 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 the South End.
Like that very, very interesting. I I like the whole concept of those things and I'd just like to know how they go together because I put things together like that and it's like my little mechanical mind is running around.
Guys, just to jump in, uh uh I'm Josh Brand. I'm the developer and ultimately the builder. Uh I actually would probably, for the maintenance reasons specifically, probably ultimately favor aluminum for these. And something that with like a baked kynar finish like and like any of the other like roofing metals or edge metals. Uh I think that these are going to be obviously at the, you know, uh sort of the inverted corner condition that's on the screen here. Heavier gage than just like, you know, typical break stock. But uh uh I uh as builder and as the person who has to warranty this, uh I don't like the idea of painted finishes conceptually and and a and like a baked aluminum finishes ultimately where we'd where we'd like to be.
Or something that might age. I don't know if that's strong enough, but you know, that you would never have to touch.
Okay, Chris, um good. Uh do you have any other questions, Chris?
No, I also I I appreciate the uh how they changed that uh interior and and the the uh entrance ways. And I was also looking at the doors that bring you from the uh ha- handicapable ramp and the door main doors. Are those wide doors? Because they look up not as inviting as I would think. Maybe it's said double doors or a bigger door.
Yeah, we we haven't gotten to the point of uh of of thinking thoroughly. We're in the very early stages of design. Um we we that is a very good point. I uh I I we would definitely make the doors as inviting as possible. Um the intention is that the 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 ground floor becomes a a a very inviting, a very public place, uh a place where events occur for art. And uh and I would think that a the a double door would be a must. Uh not only for uh people moving in, but I would imagine that the artists will be moving large objects into the building in and out.
And I saw the folding window wall in the back, at least the courtyard, so, you know.
Maybe that's right. On the on the back, we've we've surf, you know, we've we're we are, we are considering things like uh, you know, uh o- opening, you know, s- sliding doors or or kind of like larger type uh apertures that allow, you know, the the um the the units to, you know, the large objects to to move in and out of the of the of the courtyards.
Great work. Thank you.
Great. Um John, do you have any questions?
Um I sorry, I couldn't get unmuted before quickly enough. Um no questions at this time.
John, you had mentioned last time regarding uh the detailing of ceilings. We are very mindful of that. We are thinking about Western red cedar um to to as a as a as a ceiling material. Um and um, you know, we will bring details to you as soon as those are going through the design process.
Thank you, Catrill. Um Felicia, any questions?
No questions.
Um Kevin, any questions?
No, thanks.
Okay, we can uh and I I don't. Well, actually, I have a question. I'm looking at your facade. I'm trying to see how the facade skin terminates sort of at its lower edges. And it appears that it terminates at some kind of base to the right of the entranceway. And can you tell me what that base material would be?
Could you zoom in or actually choose the rendering of the current and zoom way in on it?
Yes, we're thinking this is a CLT project. That is how we manage to keep seven stories with uh below seventy feet is a laminated timber. And the expression, the expression of the wood and the warmth is something that we want to make very present in the project. And so we haven't talked specifically about what that what that is, but it will be a a stone of the warm kind of of a warm quality, something like a limestone. Um something that kind of belongs to the, you can see how the building has this warmth tonality to it.
Mm hmm.
Um that is the 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 intention.
Okay.
It certainly is going to be a stone base.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yeah.
That's great. And um and then you have the canopy wrapping around the gallery and entrance. So um so the skin would terminate at the canopy.
Um yes.
Wha- what I was concerned with was the photographs you had of the actual skin material and it and the way it terminates at the bottom of those photographs looks very um paper thin. But you would not, tha- that's not how you would see it. It would be more like the lower photographs where it terminates at some kind of stone-based material. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And e- even even in the upper portion, it will terminate in some sort of border that has some heft to it that forms the the transition between the material and the ceiling. So as not to present itself as a as a thin layer on the building, but of something of more heft.
Okay, great. Thank you, Catrill. Those that's my question. Um so I think we can go to comments. And um uh Kevin, do you have any comments? And I think our our comments are intended to be framed in a way to help the applicant come before us with an approvable application.
Yeah, no, I don't have any comments. Thanks.
Okay, um Felicia, any comments? And can we look at the proposed rendering while we're talking rather than the, this is the, this is the older one that we're looking at?
So I really appreciate the comments and the in uh the revisions that have evolved since the last time that that um we saw this. I think it's moving in a very good direction. And I especially, I think I especially appreciate the opening up of the corner and also to giving the handicap entrance as well as the main entrance for equal footing. So that's it's really important. So thank you.
Great, thank you, Felicia. Um uh Chris, comments?
I uh and it'd even be a question. I know they added, you added the uh metal railings uh for the balconies. What about the railing at the top that uh separates but that that runs around the top for the penthouses?
That's also metal railing.
Okay.
Um I think you can see it in this. You can see in in this railing.
Okay, perfect.
There is a, there is a bit of a parapet, so the railing only protrudes about, you know, eighteen inches. A bit less than two feet above the parapet.
So there's less visible railing in the new proposal than there was in the previous.
Yes.
Okay.
And it's metal.
And it's metal. Thank you, Catrill. Any comments, Chris?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. John, comments?
Um, okay, um so last time we saw this, I two other commissioners, and I thought it was Chris and Catherine, and Chris, you can please correct me, stated that they felt that this building needed to new move more towards a building that would a that would feel comfortable in the uh South End Protection area and talked area and talked about articulation around the windows more, parapet and that kind of thing. Um, and my comment, uh, linked to that was that I still had concerns about whether this material could do that. I now, I think this is a beautiful material. I think it's a beautiful design. But as John Amadeo said earlier, uh, our business here is not to, uh, choose beautiful designs. It's to make buildings that conform with the regulations in the district. And our regulations say that, um, if, since we're allowing a demolition of a, uh, contributing building, that we review this to district standards. It's still in the protection area. It's a different context. I understand that. And I, I know there's a building that has maybe just been completed in, um, in, uh, South Boston that, uh, is using this material, but it's, it's a beautiful material, but it's a very restrictive material. In that you can only, yeah, you can only, it looks very much like shingle and the only way to terminate a run is with a, uh, horizontal or vertical steel element. And in your renderings, you're still, you're still not showing that. Um, some of your window openings show the steel wrapping element, but the balconies and the corners don't. Um, and I'm not saying that in any accusatory sense. I know renderings are renderings. They, they're part of the process and they're usually lagging behind the design. But it, what it does is it brings up my concern about being able to articulate openings more, articulate the parapet. And move this building towards that vocabulary unless the commission decides that uh, we don't need to do that. There's no vote tonight, um, but I think going forward, I would like to know more about these materials and I'd like you to think more about, is there some way with this material or within the openings that you can, um, express the articulation that we would find on some of the other buildings? You know, it's a big responsibility to use a new material in a, in a landmark district. And like I said, I went through all them, the material they had online and looked at all the pictures and it's, uh, it, it is, it's kind of an amazing material, the way they hang the shingles. Um, and it seems to have beautiful textures. But just to reiterate, that's not our job. And I still have that concern and I, I need that concern to be more addressed, uh, to take this to a full approval.
Mm-hmm.
Project.
Thank you, John, for bringing that up. Is there a way that we could see the building that, uh, it will be torn down?
Yes.
Yeah, that little building.
Um.
I have to step away pretty soon. I'm actually late to something else.
Hold on. This is the building that was approved there before, uh. There it is.
There we go. Yeah.
Hmm. The three story building or the one story building?
Of both, I think.
Of both.
It's both buildings. That's right.
And we said in the, I know you weren't here, John, in the advisory, we said that we would very likely allow that demolition.
Right.
And I do recall saying that those, uh, delivery door areas that you could articulate something like that. And, and thank you for bringing that back up, John.
Hmm. Okay, uh, so I, I have some comments too. So when other fellow commissioners are finished with comments, I'd like to share mine. Are there any more, John?
No, I'm done.
Okay, so, um, sort of on, I know I wasn't here for the first one, but I really do like the progression, um, that you're making. Um, the, the corner is vastly improved. Um, with the elimination of the wraparound handicap ramp. Um, the corner and, and eroding the whole corner makes that so much more welcoming. I think you're gonna um, find people, you know, being very receptive to coming and going from this building. It's gonna, it'll be an event when you come and go from this building. Um, even on a casual basis, it, it feels so, it feels very good. My concern is with the, the, the whole facade being just a uniform, um, skin and geometry. If you could go to, I think, do you have a rendering of the whole building in its new version? Or only in the old version? Oh, there, right there. So.
You zoom in on that?
Yeah. What, what I see in this new building, and it's a very handsome building as it is, but what doesn't work within the protection area is the fact that there isn't a hierarchy between the horizontal and the vertical. Um, something I was hoping you, John, would bring up because that's what I learned from you, listening to you talk about it. Um, and, um, if you look to the building on the left, you'll see even buildings that are of the same height um, that are not tall buildings, they somehow celebrate their verticality by having some articulation create a hierarchy between the vertical and the horizontal. So the pilasters between the windows do that on the building to the left. Um, and, and you also show that in your, um, contextual render, um, elevations that are, um, demonstrating the visibility or lack of visibility of the mechanicals on the roof, where you show other buildings on the street. And all of those buildings have very prominent verticality, even though they're short buildings. And, um, that verticality is expressed in, in pilasters or some kind of, you know, spandrels connecting the windows vertically or something that does that, which this building is not doing. And so, uh, I would like, and that would bring it, I think, closer to the district. Whether you can do that with this skin material that you're proposing is a, a challenge that you face. Um, and I, I don't know the answer to that, but, um, uh, I think you need to look at some, uh, study some alternative ways to express some verticality in the facade. You've already helped by aligning your windows, um, and that helps a lot, but I don't think it, it goes far enough to, to do that. Um, all the other buildings have aligned windows vertically too, and they still have artic- articulation in the facade that helps the verticality, helps the vertical dominate the horizontal.
I think you're spot on, John.
Great. Thanks, John.
And maybe the rendering of this with those corner pieces and maybe not just on the corners, maybe that will give you some of that verticality.
Exactly.
Mm-hmm. So, yeah, I don't know if this warrants another advisory, um, but you know, it's, it's something you'll have to think about and talk through with staff to find out if, if you think you're ready for an application or if another advisory would be helpful to you. And that's your choice. We, we don't require one or the other.
Thank you very much. Those are very, very good comments, gentlemen. I want to, uh, I want to express my appreciation for you every time that I've worked with the, the commission. We, I end up with a better design than what we had. So these are comments that we take at heart and that we, we pay a lot of attention to. I think we, we certainly will be coming back for more and, and to show you our progress and, and to show you how we are responding to your comments. Um, certainly, I think one of the steps will be to add more detail to these renderings. Obviously that takes time and, and effort, but add more detail and creating a rendering that shows how we're resolving uh, the material on, on every corner and in, in, within, within the different conditions and, and within that, and I don't know how I'm going to do it, but we'll figure something out that.
I think John and Chris, sorry, I think John and Chris's suggestion really is, I think they're on the right direction. You have these tall corner pieces that aren't shown in the rendering yet. But those are the tall cor- elements that you could use. Maybe the building has some plane changes.
Yeah.
Um, but that's, I think, I think they're right on and that's the opportunity if you want to stick with this material.
Right. Um, I'd just like to add one thing that I see in this rendering that you're doing well and I want to encourage you to keep it as you, as your building progresses in its design, is that your skin material, when it wraps around the corner, it wraps around the corner to window bays before you change to another material. And I really like that. It engages your entire, um, V support structure. Um, and, and that looks exactly right. So I hope you maintain that, um, element in your design.
And what is that other material?
That's a good question, John. Catrill?
Uh, we, we don't quite know yet, but it will be some sort of, it, it will be a less expensive material. We're all the money on this very expensive brick shingle. Um, uh, it, it, uh, it, it would be a, 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 a cement, uh, panelized cement board type material. Like a nichihao or, or a hardy or, or something like that. We'll, we'll detail it more and, and, and bring some of that next time.
Which it looks like then becomes the same material for the top floor that's recessed back. Is that correct?
It, it's, it's meant to look like that, but it's not necessarily that. I'm not ready to, to commit to that one yet.
Okay.
There is a lot of financial considerations for, for the project. Um, this is a site that was empty for many, many years, on sale for many years, and we, we managed to figure out how to, how to make it work and, and, um, it's, it's on the razor's edge there.
Okay.
Understood.
Well, I, I wish you a lot of luck with this because so far, even as far as you've gotten, this is, this proposal is, um, I think much more in keeping with the district even than the building proposal that preceded it. So, um, so I think you're on a good track. Um, and as long as you've heard our comments and think you can, um, progress further utilizing our comments, I think you're you're on your way to a great building. Um, so, um, yeah, well, I'm eager to see what you come up with next.
Thank you so much. Very much appreciated.
Okay, so there's no vote for this since it's advisory, so we'll just go to the next item on the agenda. Thank you, Catrill.
Thank you.
And thank you, Josh.
Thanks, everybody.
So, um, the next item on the agenda, I believe, is approving minutes. Is that right, Rachel?
Is, and if you give me one second, I'll pull the presentation back. Okay.
Rachel, I wasn't here last month, but can I vote on approving the minutes?
Um, I would abstain just because you weren't there. I mean.
Right. We have enough commissioners, right?
Yeah, we do. We have some.
I also was not there.
We have three who can.
According to Robert's rules, you can vote on approving because if, if there was, imagine the opposite, if there was something in the minutes that was wrong, that you're aware of.
Mm-hmm.
You shouldn't, you should be able to state that as well.
You know, I think you've mentioned that before, actually, John.
Yeah, I'm not an expert on it, but.
I think, I think on the, I think on the main commission, Rachel, um, I come back to what John said, on the main commission, we've been told that we can vote even if we were not at the meeting.
All right.
Should I make a motion that we accept the, the ratification of the 9225 meeting minutes?
Yes. And it's seconded. So, um, we'll go for a vote. John?
Aye.
Felicia?
Aye.
Um, Kevin?
I'm gonna abstain.
Okay. Um, Chris?
Aye.
And all abstain. Um, but we have three votes in favor, so it carries. And any staff updates?
Um, I don't think we really do have too many staff updates. Jackie and I are, we had, just had a lot of apps for this month. Um, so it's nice to see things picking up in the south end. Um, we have sent an email out about the window subcommittee. So take a look at that if you're involved and let us know what dates work for you so we can have that next meeting sorted. Um, I think Jackie and my.
When did you send that?
I sent the original email, I think sometime last week, and then I just re-sent it.
Okay, I didn't get it. I, I missed it last week. I see it right now.
Yeah, no worries.
I just.
I would say one final thing just for the, um, commissioners to keep in mind is that, um, we, uh, are sorting out internally the projected schedule for next year's hearing. So starting, um, sometime in 2026, obviously. Um, so just be on the lookout once we send an email to that schedule.
Okay.
Which should still be.
I have a hard time with one week ahead, let alone a year.
Yeah.
I showed up for this meeting twice and I have to be late for the third time.
You made it.
Chris, if you actually have that railing in your backyard, I will definitely buy you a beer. And maybe, maybe more than one.
I, um, Rachel, I have one item, um, if, if you're done with your updates. Um, so, um, uh, earlier in the week, um, I came across a, a, a research paper that was done by a University of Lowell, um, history professor. Um, and, um, he, he, he seems to be an expert in um, 19th and 20th century American history is his focus. He's getting a PhD at UMass Lowell in, um, American history as well. And he's done a research paper specifically on Blackstone and Franklin Square in the south end. I'm not quite sure why he decided to take a focus on those two things, but he did. And I, I did not have Felicia, Chris's and Kevin's email address, but I sent it to Rachel and Jackie and to John and Catherine and Peter, whose email addresses I did have. So, um, I don't know, Rachel or Jackie, if you forwarded that to, um, Felicia or Kevin or Chris, but if you could, um, that would be great. I now have their email addresses so I could forward it to. Um, but anyway, I'm always interested in things like this when they pop up and I thought you might be too.
Very much. Thank you. Please, please forward that to me. I mean, just a little known thing. I take my dog there twice a day to both the Franklin and Blackstone. And I have taken upon myself for the last four years to trim the suckers and all the low hanging branches 20 feet up on every tree in both Franklin and Blackstone Park.
Yeah, they have linden trees that are, that are, um, that, th- those suckers are just, um, persistent.
Yeah. I found a few things I hadn't wanted to find in there when I was doing it, but.
I'm sure.
But, uh, I, I take that upon myself. I'm very interested in those parks and fountains and.
Yeah, that's great. Um, wear thick gloves when you're trimming those things because you don't want to find something in there that sticks you. So, um, but anyway, that's great. So, yeah, I, I haven't read the paper myself. It's on my to-do list. So I don't know, I can't, um, vouch for its, um, historic integrity, but the guy sounds like somebody who would be very, he, his, um, bibliography is almost as long as the paper, which suggests he's done, uh, an enormous amount of research. Um, so, um, I, I somehow feel slightly confident that, um, the historic integrity is there, um, but I just haven't read it yet, so I can't vouch for it.
We're working on tree spacing for new trees that we're planting to take care of the ones that have either fallen over or died. So I'd like to very much see what this is.
That's great. That's great. Yeah.
I've gotta go. I'm sorry.
I think we're done anyway, so I ha- hear a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Okay, all in favor? Voice vote?
Aye.
Aye. So, um, that's great. The motion carries. We can adjourn.
Good night.
Bye everyone.
Take care, everyone.
Appreciate your time.